All right, let me call a meeting to order. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, so first up, we have the approval of minutes for the October 11th, 2022 work session and special meeting. For the October 13th, 2022 special meeting, the October 18th, 2022 special meeting, and the regular meeting, and the October 24th, 2022 special meeting. I get a motion to approve the minutes.
Start moving.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rosi?
Yes.
Mr. Wilkowski?
Yes. Is there any public comment on the agenda items for tonight? No? Okay, so first up, we're gonna move into, we have a presentation from Real Term Energy. Let's just start the meeting. Start the meeting.
One that you sent me. Pretty close to what I'm gonna do.
And I'd also like to invite Carla Castillo, the Chair of the Conservation Advisory Committee, to, you know, observe the presentation if she's able to do so.
Sit over here.
Yeah, I mean, you can sit next to. And you have a, Ray, do you have a copy of the IGA?
There you go. Can I take a look at that one? I'll share it with you.
Start the video here. I apologize to everyone out in the audience. We're gonna work on getting a screen installed in the courtroom sometime in '23, so this way we can have folks being able to participate along with us. But it's gonna involve some cabling and some other stuff, and we're not, just weren't able to do it yet. So just bear with us for a little bit on this. Okay, so Steve, are you there? Can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Super. Hello, everybody.
Hi, Steve.
All right. I want you to take it from here.
Just real quick, just for the folks that are out there in the public. So what we're looking at tonight is, we're considering whether or not we're going to, to basically convert the town's streetlights fully to LED, and also as part of that process, take ownership of them from Central Hudson. And there's some other stuff on here as well about adding smart controls to these streetlights. And we're gonna consider the costs, and also the savings involved in this. There's also, we're also gonna talk about installing in some EV charging stations as well as part of the discussion. And I'll let Steve kick it off.
Great. Thanks, everyone, for having me. We're here at the IGA stage, the investment grade audit. Initially, we provided the town a proposal to upgrade the streetlights. And we based the initial proposal on invoices that showed the streetlight inventory that were received from the town. And initially, there was, it was thought that there was 241 fixtures to upgrade. And as you can see from the IGA, there are 139 fixtures to upgrade. It was thought that there was 258 pre-existing, but our audit revealed that there's 358 pre-existing LEDs. So there's a grand total of 511 fixtures in the town of Cornwall. There's 358 pre-existing LEDs. We are not upgrading those streetlights. We are only upgrading, what is it here? I believe it's 139 plus the decorative plugs, so 14. So we've turned up the numbers, as I'm sure a lot of you can appreciate. Costs of building, not only for material, but for labor. The LED lighting upgrade is up approximately $10,000. It's just over $95,000. There's an incentive of just over $5,100. The net project cost is just over $90,000. Utility acquisition cost, which is the cost to buy the streetlights from the utility. And the reason that the municipality is considering this is because that's where the savings are. If you were to just let Central Hudson upgrade all the streetlights, you would not save on the maintenance portion. The maintenance portion is considerable. So the utility acquisition costs have gone up slightly. They've gone up by just over $27,000. That's the price today to buy the streetlights from the utility. So the total project cost with the buyback, with the acquisition cost from the utility are just over $352,000. So how are we doing this? How are we doing this potentially with no upfront costs? We're doing that because we are converting the existing streetlights that remain from high-pressure sodium to LED technology. And if you look at the baseline inventory, that shows the various wattages of watts in the town now, HPS wattages. And they range anywhere from 70 watts to 400 watts. And if you look at the next column down, the replacement LED inventory, we are reducing wattages, you know, from, we are, the wattages are anywhere from 24 watts to 124-watt LED. So what does that mean? Well, there's an overall reduction in energy or energy consumption of 72%. That is significant. The way that we achieve that is by doing custom lighting designs throughout the town. It's not a one-for-one replacement. Custom lighting designs ensure that we're maximizing the streetlight wattages, meaning that we are reducing as much power as we can while still lighting the roadways as per lighting guidelines and suggestions. And that's exactly what we've done. We go down to the energy cost savings. You can see that your energy costs before the upgrade were just shy of $90,000. After the upgrade, you'll be just over $24,000 annually. That's for your consumption. That represents the 72% reduction. Your utility costs are gonna go from just shy of $120,000 to a little over $23,000. That represents an 81% savings. Maintenance, there's no maintenance that the municipality is paying right now for the streetlights because the maintenance is being done by the utility. So we have put in maintenance of $12,000, just over $12,000, which represents $24 a light per year for fixtures. So your baseline right now for the streetlights is just shy of $120,000 annually. Post-upgrade, once the lights have been, the remaining lights have been switched out, we are looking at a post-upgrade expenditure of just over $35,000. So in total, that represents savings of 70%. If the municipality was going to pay for this upgrade themselves with their own money, we're looking at a simple payback of four years. My suggestion, if I may, is to use a TELF financing mechanism because it's better that the municipality use money that's more expensive for things that have a high ROI. Things like roads, sewers, things that have no ROI, you'll wanna use the cheaper money. I think that may make sense, it may not, but it's always better to, you know, if you do have to do any sewer work down the road, you use money that you can get from the government. Use ARCA funds if you have them available. We are suggesting a tax-exempt lease purchase financing mechanism. It allows the municipality to do this streetlight upgrade for virtually no cost. It is popular among municipalities all across the United States, about 50 states. They use them for LED streetlights, for buying trucks, for buying fire trucks, for running all kinds of maintenance equipment.
Okay.
20-year net project savings. Again, the 20-year net project savings, 1.9 million for doing the streetlight upgrade. Okay. So, one of the fixtures, the next column, smart controls option, 511 fixtures. The net adder for smart controls includes 10 years of SaaS fees, software-as-a-service fees, as well as LTEDs, which are cell phones, just over $97,000. And that is smart controls on all 511 fixtures. We have worked with the utility on the municipality's behalf, and we have learned that the fixtures that have already been changed out, the pre-existing LEDs, do in fact have dimmable drivers and five to seven thin receptacles. So they are suitable for smart controls. So now the municipality can have smart controls in all of her streetlights. They can control them. They can dim them. If there's problems, they can dim them. If someone calls and says the lights keep bright on my house, municipality has control over what they can do with those fixtures in the way of dimming. And then eventually, there'll also be a tariff in place, a utility tariff in place, that'll give municipalities credit for being able to dim them, for example, between 1:00 and 5:00 in the morning, when no one's driving around and there's virtually no pedestrian traffic. That is not in place now, but it is coming. There's a lot of pressure on the utilities and the Public Service Commission to get that done, and it is coming. Not only that, when you add smart controls, you add two to three years to the life of the luminaire because you're controlling the heat better. LEDs live and die by heat. So total project cost with the smart controls, just over $193,000. Total project cost, including smart controls, including the acquisition, $450,000 rounded up. Simple payback with smart controls is five years. Okay. On the, on the next page, which is where we have all of the cash flows and amortization tables, what I thought the municipality interested in doing is going with our two-year labor warranty. What that means is, for $24 per streetlight per year, Real Term Energy will include the maintenance on all the streetlights, all 511 streetlights, and will include the labor. If you were to do the maintenance yourselves and get a local contractor, they're gonna charge you every time they go up to fix a light. Every time they take a bucket truck to change out a streetlight, they're gonna charge you for that. That's where the bulk of the cost comes, is from the labor. But Real Term Energy will include that for the first two years. Now, what you should know about LED streetlights is, if there's a failure that's going to occur, it's usually gonna occur in that first year. The failure rate, by the way, is less than 1%. And being totally transparent, I wanna tell you exactly what's going on with these fixtures, how they perform. And this is based on information that's been put forward on LED streets, streetlights since about 2011. Okay, so again, we will include two years of maintenance, if you want. That includes labor, so everything's taken care of. The municipality doesn't have to worry about these lights at all. Everything will be taken care of by Real Term Energy. Dispatching of the contractor, logging all the warranty information, tracking fixture replacements, all the paperwork, Real Term Energy will take care of all of that for the municipality. The reason that a lot of municipalities take us up on this offer is because they don't have people in place at the municipality to look after the streetlights because they never had to look after them. They never hold them before. So that's something that we can offer the municipality. So what we also thought we would include in this particular project, total project cost, is including the smart controls for every streetlight, including two years of maintenance, including labor, and including the EV charging station to be located at the town building. And if you look at the last table on the second page, it speaks to that. So what this shows is, your current operating costs for the utility are just shy of $120. Post-upgrade, they're gonna be just over $71,000. When you add that to the lease payment, you are cash flow neutral, meaning that you're not paying any more for the streetlights than you're paying for them right now. In the second year, in every consecutive year over a 10-year term, you're cash flow positive. For example, in year two, you're cash flow positive by over $33,000. Year three, by $23,000. Year four, $26,000, and so on. So your cumulative cash flow over the 10-year amortization period is just over $302,000 to the good, meaning that you're paid less than $302,000 on the new LED streetlights, and you're paying for the streetlights right now with the utility. This is based on TELF financing. We will likely need to get a new quote from the TELF lenders. Real Term Energy, by the way, does not put any fees, does not put any percentages, does not put any margin on the financing. It's something that we offer our clients. What we do is we go to a broker, and the broker goes to three banks, and they get their best interest rate, and they get the best term, and that's what we provide the client with. So we will, as you can see under notes, number three, this MLC proposal is valid until November 13. So we are definitely going to have to get a new quote. And with the way that things are right now, those quotes are usually good for 30 days. Just so you know. You are looking at getting a, am I able to share my screen?
Check. Now I would like you. Yeah, it should be. Yep.
Try to play where you, to your screen. There you go. Here with me, folks. Can you see my screen?
Uh, no.
No.
Let me know if you can see my screen.
Not cool.
No, not yet.
Up, up, okay.
Something came up.
Oh, hit you. Up to my.
Oh, basic, yeah.
Oh, maybe.
Oh, it was basically not let us.
Oh, I think it's only the person that's in control, like you set up the meeting.
Yeah, okay.
So I don't think. You think there was Sean, a hit you.
Oh, there you go. Okay.
Yay.
Yeah, we got it, okay. Yeah, we got it. Oh, it just came up for a second.
Did it work?
Try it again, for a second.
Just a second, Steve, yeah.
Love technology, love technology.
Yes, we do. Okay. There it is.
There it is, there it is.
Okay.
Okay. The reason I'm bringing this up is because the town asked about a quote for some fleet vehicles, for a fleet vehicle. This is one of, one of the options that the town has. This is a, this is an example of a 50-kilowatt unit, which we think is ample. A 75-watt unit would be, would be overkill, and of course, that would cost more money. We think this is the better option for the municipality. You can charge two electrical vehicles at once, which is great to get your vehicle. Or you could, and you can also go with a similar system to the one you have now that is more of a level two. This one here is a level three, which is considered fast charging. Or you can get a level two. It really depends on what you want to have to do with the site and making sure the site is suitable for this type of 50-kilowatt system. And we can, we can get more into the weeds on this when the villages, no, we're sorry, when the town is ready to look at another EV charging station.
Yeah, no.
And we can potentially add this to the project cost of the streetlight upgrade.
I think what we're looking to do is, for the purposes of this, right now, we're looking to stick, this would be a 2023 item. And, you know, right now, we're looking at providing a public charging station as well as, you know, the.
Yeah.
Yeah. This other thing would, you know, more be if the town moves in the direction of bringing on EV fleet vehicles for the town.
Does anybody have any questions for me? Covered quite a lot there.
Well, I guess I would say the, the simple payback over the four or five years. Let's say the town doesn't go with the TELF option, and we opt to pay for it, you know, with tax levy or other means. Would that be four or five yearly payments? Like, what, what does that look like if we, or is that?
If you're gonna use ARCA funds or something, where the money might cost you anything?
Yeah.
The simple payback with smart controls, because I believe that's the direction you're headed, is five years.
Okay.
So once you finance, you have to factor in obviously the cost of ARCA, right?
Yeah.
So yes, you'd be looking at five years. If you would like us to add in the EV charging station for public use, we can do that and give you a, give you a calculation.
I just wanna have options for, you know, if we're gonna pay for it, you know, versus doing the TELF, so we can sort of see. All right. Yeah, if you want, if you wanna do that, because I think what we really wanna consider.
So you mean bond, like bonding? Is that what you're saying?
Well, either using ARCA or, yeah, or ARCA or bonding or some other means. I just wanna see, you know, so we have options. But the TELF financing is certainly a good option, too.
What's the rate on bonds right now?
I have to check. I mean, it's kind of all over the place. But certainly up, since the last time we looked.
As far as these rates, how long, how long are they in effect as far as TELF? What do you see? Is it 30 days or?
Right, yeah, it's fluctuating daily. We're not really, but it's, it's all over the place, but I would say 30 days, you're pretty safe.
Okay.
And we do have other municipalities that we're working with in your area that are looking at using ARCA funds. But you, if you, if you do have ARCA funds that you can utilize, it's great. That money's not costing you now anything. But just make sure that you can in fact use it for every streetlight upgrade.
Yeah, no, we, we have to look into that. I mean, certainly, look, the biggest piece of this is the utility acquisition cost. So.
Well, this impacts the most people.
Yeah. No, no, I, so. So this is, this is, you know, so either, but I think it would be good to know what it would look like if you added an EV charging station into that.
We do that.
And then I think that, you know, once we have that, then the town board, we've gotta decide. Yeah.
Are we looking at the same, the same two charging stations that we, that have, have been proposed for some time? Or has something changed?
No, no, what I'd ask for is, down the road, I'm looking to start with certain town fleet vehicles moving over to. So we asked him to look at this, but.
I understand.
But we wanna look at, I mean, the original one that he had quoted, the one that is roughly a $27,000 project to add on. I think that's what we're looking at right now.
Okay.
Right. That's the one that we're looking at, including the overall project cost.
Yeah.
So yes, now, just wanna ask a quick question. Has the, has the utility been called, and have you requested that they stop upgrading the burnt-out bulbs in the HPS units with LEDs fixtures?
I said that, you know, a while ago, with that, with, when.
With Jason, Jason?
Yeah, I said that a while, I think maybe one or two months ago.
Okay, because if you don't send us.
I'll check, I'll check in with Jason. Or.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, in fact, yeah, I mean, look, they know that we're considering this.
Anna was in on the email, so that's how I remember it.
They know we're considering this, and obviously, you know, sort of the, it's basically, you know, can we let the utility upgrade them, but then they own them, and we have to maybe, or do we go this route? And we have more savings, right? And so this is also gonna determine whether or not we, you know, sign the purchase agreement, and then we've got 90 days at the PSC, which they have to decide whether or not they're gonna let us do it, which I don't see what they wouldn't. And then, once that's done, so that's, that's, you know, so I think the way that, a way forward here is basically, we're gonna, you know, following this, if we can chat, right? Oh, yeah, sure, answer the question.
I'm sorry, Steve, I just wanna ask a couple technical questions first, and then, all right. So I know that we're still, I, I know that of all these, I'm glad that all of them were smart controlled. I was very surprised with that. Do you have an approximate age of, like, some of the LED lights that were replaced already by Central Hudson in terms of the age of them?
I don't have that information.
I'm just curious. Like, if, if they're like five years, you know, that's what I'm kind of looking to see if they're, you know. You know what I'm trying to say?
They're still viable.
They're still viable if we're looking for, you know, this.
We, he can inquire. Whether we get that information from them is a different story.
Well, they gave you the smart control information, which I thought was good.
We're pretty, we're pretty persistent.
Thank you.
Have you ever had a circumstance?
We can look into that for you.
Thank you. And then, none of the looms is below, right, nothing's above 3,000K. I think we discussed that, correct? I think.
Yeah, that's, that's the color temperature.
Yes, the color temperature, right, okay.
Which is pretty close to what you already have with the HPS lights. They're more of a yellowish, orange glow, and that, that seems to be the way that a lot of municipalities are going to be facing.
Now, do you also use, with your maintenance, do you use local contractors? How do you, how do you, you know, subcontract that?
It's a good question, actually. What we do is we put all the fit documents together, and we submit those to the municipality. We send a link, and we make that available to the public. We let the local contractors in your area. Chances are, we've already worked with a lot of them. And we make sure that they're aware of the installation and maintenance that's gonna be happening in Cornwall, and we're big in on it. And then we take that information and we share that with the municipality.
Okay, thank you.
So how does the maintenance, so after, let's say we do the two-year, you know, maintenance agreement as part of this. After that's up, obviously, we would have the agreement in place with the contractors. And then afterwards, what determines the cost of the, you know, is that just relationship we have with the contractor?
Directly with the, with the dealership.
Yeah, so then it would be, okay.
Or you could renew if you feel the cost savings.
Or you can renew, or you could renew with us. I mean, those prices are locked in for two years, by the way, at $2 a light per year.
Okay.
And if you wanted, if you wanted a longer contract, if you wanted a four- or five-year contract locked in at that price, you have that option as well.
Oh, okay. Carla, you have questions?
Yes. Do these lights, first, I wanted to say, oh, so first, through my, through my job at the Hudson Valley Regional Council, just for full disclosure, I have met with Steve on an informational basis for other communities in the region that are exploring streetlights. I've also met with NIPA and Wendell and a number of other companies, so I just wanted to be sure everybody knew about that. So, and I wanted to thank you. The notes are really detailed, so that's very helpful. Some of my, some of my questions are related to the notes. I was wondering if the lights include any shielding, or if that would be at an additional cost? There might be some residential areas that, where there might be concern about light trespass if there is no shielding?
Good question, and typically, we make contingency for shielding, yes. Part of, it's part of the design process, so yes, there are contingencies for shielding as far as I know.
Okay. And I see in, in one of your notes that you, that Central Hudson has installed some 2,700 Kelvin LEDs. And I would recommend, this is with my seat, a seat hat on, and also with my professional hat on to the town, I would recommend 2,700 Kelvin, as it is a warmer light than 3,000. I, you know, fully aware that the cost savings from 2,700 Kelvin. I, you know, fully aware that the cost savings from twenty-seven hundred Kelvin is a little bit lower than three thousand Kelvin, but not significant enough. And I think that the residents of the town would very much appreciate having a warmer light. So that's a recommendation that, that I would make. In your note number seven, there's a comment about that the, that there should, all of the lights should have seven pin receptacles, but it sounded like you had confirmed that there, that the smart controls would be eligible on all the lights because it's, all of the pins are actually seven pins?
That's what, yeah, that's what we were told by Central Hudson.
Okay.
And dimmable drivers. Is this, is this, is this Carla?
Yes.
Hi Carla.
Hi.
Yes, they, they, they also confirmed that, because if, if you don't have dimmable drivers, it negates the purpose. They have to have dimmable drivers and either five or seven pin receptacles.
Okay. And then just jumping for a moment back to the EV. So that's great that it's a DC fast charger. Is, is NLW a Canadian company? I'm not as familiar with that company.
Well, I believe it's an American company.
Oh, it is? Okay, alright. And then if the, if the town were to contract for a four-year labor warranty, would there be any reduction in the per fixture maintenance cost?
No, we would lock it in at two dollars a fixture a year.
Okay. So also in, let's see, number eleven, it says that the materials and labor prices may be subject to change given the volatility in the market prices. Is there, like in the EV charging station, is there any contingency on the LED streetlights so that the costs do not go exorbitantly high?
Well, there's, we have seen, we have seen price increases, not only for material, but for labor as well. And I guess it depends. I mean, we've got this proposal, this investment paid out in front of you all today. I guess it depends on how long it takes for the municipality to decide if they're gonna go forward on it. If they wait several months, like some municipalities have done, I can guarantee you the cost will go up. So we gotta make sure that if the Public Services Commission gets back to you with the go-ahead for the acquisition cost, that's important. You have to wait for that. Joshua mentioned that. You like to wait for that. And then once you get that go-ahead, I would, I would advise you to pull the trigger. So I would, I would talk about it amongst yourselves now. And providing that that buyback number isn't, doesn't, you know, isn't, isn't much more than, or. So Joshua, are you waiting simply for the Public Services Commission to okay the purchase of the streetlights? Is that it? Your acquisition cost is not changing, right?
Yeah, I don't expect the acqui, no, it's not, it's not changing, no. And in fact, really, pretty much what they give you is what it's gonna be. There's really no negotiating with that. They, they're not willing.
We haven't formally actually.
They got a contract with them.
Right, we haven't, right. We have no contract.
I don't know if they're going through regulatory, where are they exactly on that?
Well, no, we. It depends on when the last.
July. It was July, that's the most, yeah, we, yeah, so.
It goes for a year.
Yeah, it goes for a year. So they're not gonna give us another one.
It will be a contract with Central Hudson.
We do, we have.
I know, but the price, price should hold, was not signed, but the price should hold for a year based on that agreement.
We have the acquisition agreement with the terms and the cost and everything. They gave it to us in July and then we had. So basically next, the board would have to decide, can I sign it? And then it goes to the PSC and then once, if it's approved, then we have to come up with the funds to pay for it. So I think at the December meeting, we would make a decision if we're going to, if the board general authorized me to sign it. And then if we decide to do that at the December meeting, but I think that's the next step. Where's the, is the agreement?
Yeah, I think if, if, if you can get this, get, get word back from the Public Services Commission and decides amongst yourselves whether to, to carry on with the streetlight upgrade, I don't see the prices changing that much. I mean, the chances of them coming down are highly unlikely, but chances of them going up slightly are more likely.
Yeah.
It's just the environment we're in right now.
I just have two additional questions. If the town were to request twenty-seven hundred Kelvin for all lights, how much would that impact the cost?
Don't know on hand. That's, that's gonna have to go back to our design team because they would, you know, twenty-seven hundred, three thousand K. Are, are the chips close enough where it wouldn't change the designs much?
Yeah.
That's really up to the lighting designers. They're gonna have to, I'll, Carla, I will ask them if there's any design work that needs to be done from going from three thousand K to twenty-seven hundred and, and I'll get back to, to Virginia or to Josh or to whomever.
I think they've already done the design work, right?
And then in terms of the, oh, sorry?
Yeah, the design work is based on three thousand K.
Right.
But like I said, twenty-seven hundred, three thousand, we may be, we may be okay, the designs may be the same because it becomes down to the LED chips and how they perform. So let me, let me talk to the designers. If, if there's no additional cost, if there's no additional work, should we base this upgrade on twenty-seven hundred K?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think.
Yes.
Yes, I think so.
And then my last question, I'm sorry. On the project, total project cost number six, where it says it does not include modification of fixture mounting. In the audit that you did, how much, to what degree do you think there may be a need for fixture mounting? Because except for all the other costs, that's the only one that kind of popped out at me.
None. I, I don't anticipate any because what we're doing is, the town is purchasing the streetlights and the arms. So what we're doing is we're not adding lights, we're not taking lights out of the system. We're simply, we're simply reusing those arms and changing out the heads. We don't anticipate relocating arms on the pole.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay. Is there any questions from any other board members or deputy supervisor? No. Okay. So Steve, I think, I think, you know, we're gonna. Oh. Any, no?
Great. Do you have any?
Do you have any questions, right? Okay, okay, that's good.
I'm sorry.
Steve has gotten any feedback from any municipality that he has provided his service before? Any feedbacks from them after the confirmation of the work or?
Oh, I mean, like we're, so.
Like the Village of Warwick and stuff, yeah.
Yeah, they're not done yet.
Yeah. They haven't done? Village Warwick.
Yeah, so, yes.
They're, they're in the, yes, the process of it. I mean, I, I, yeah, look, my understanding is that they've done work throughout the Hudson Valley and generally, you know, and they've had good feedback on the work that they've done and I know that.
I think we're the first municipality that's working with Real Term and Central Hudson.
So Josh, I do have one question. This may have already been answered previously. From the time that you guys begin the project until completion, approximately what, what timeframe are we looking at?
Nine months. So that's, and we're not at the nine-month stage now. If you were to sign the IGA in, say, December, that's when we order the lights. And we are looking at a, probably a, anywhere from a four, six-week lead time. And then we have the install, installation period, which would probably be done over a three-week period. So we should, we should have this done by the summer.
Okay.
But usually, usually from the time the initial professional services agreement is signed to the final commissioning, that's a nine-month time span.
Okay, alright. So Steve, I.
I think someone asked earlier about work that we've done in New York State. Here's a, here's a list of what we've done in New York State. More importantly, here's what some people have said, Rockland County Mayor Bruce Tucker in Piermont, Village of Piermont, Supervisor Sweden over at the Town of Warwick. And we've done both the Town of Warwick and the Village.
Okay.
Thanks.
We've got, we've got a lot of references. We, we've actually, for those folks in the audience that may not know about Real Term Energy, we've actually done over three hundred individual communities across North America.
Okay.
This is our focus. This is what we do and we like to think we're pretty good at.
Well, Steve, I appreciate you giving the presentation. I think what we're gonna do is, you know, we're, we're gonna talk amongst ourselves and this will be, you know, we're gonna have a decision to make, I think, at the December meeting. And so we'll certainly, we'll definitely be in touch about this as well. So we'll, yeah, thanks for your time. And I'm sure you'll be hearing from us in the, you know, next couple of weeks.
Great to speak to all of you and if there are any additional questions, feel free to reach out. I will get back to you with what I leave.
Okay, thanks, Steve.
Good to see you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
I have, I'm checking on how long the utility will hold the pricing because I'm not sure it's long, as long as a, as a year. I think I'm misremembering, so I'll confirm that on the other day.
Thanks, Carla. Okay, so next up, we have a resolution for a sociari settlement for Encano Anthony. We, we had held this off a week so we could, you know, have some further discussions, but at this point in time, the town is looking to move forward with this settlement. Is there any questions?
No, this is what our own attorney came up with.
Yeah, that's, that's right.
Was enough to note.
Okay. Whereas challenges have been filed by the property owner below challenging real property tax assessments on the town's assessment rule. With respect to the following parcels, property owner Encano Anthony, address description six ninety-four dash seven hundred Ors Mills Road, tax ID thirty dash one dash six, for the years twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-two. Whereas petitioners' court challenges are now pending in Supreme Court of Orange County. And whereas the town and property owner have reached a mutually agreeable resolution, now therefore be resolved, the special counsel to the town is authorized to execute a settlement on behalf of the town for assessments for no less than the following. Year twenty sixteen, assessment reduction one hundred and ninety-two thousand nine hundred and twenty. Year twenty seventeen, three hundred and ninety-seven thousand seven hundred. Year twenty eighteen, three hundred and eighty-seven thousand seven hundred. Year twenty nineteen, four hundred and five thousand seven hundred. Year twenty twenty, two hundred and two thousand dollars. Year twenty twenty-one, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand four hundred. Year twenty twenty-two, three hundred and eight thousand seven hundred dollars. Just here, can I get a motion to approve the foregoing resolution?
Second.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yeah.
Ms. Michael Rosy?
Yes.
Yes. Alright, so next up, we have the yearly Village and First Cliff Heights Water District re-levee. Whereas the town board has been presented with a list of unpaid water charges in the amount of one hundred and two thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-one cents, owned by properties outside of the Village of Cornwall and Hudson, receiving water from the Village of Cornwall and Hudson, and two owed by properties in the First Cliff Heights Water District. And whereas the Village of Cornwall and Hudson has requested that the town board adopt the resolution forwarding a list of property owners together with the unpaid charges to the County of Orange, requesting that the same be re-leveed on the twenty twenty-three general tax bill as authorized by Town of Cornwall Code subsection one fifty dash eight, a copy of which is attached here too. It is, it being understood that when the Town of Cornwall receives the taxing, or sorry, the taxes including the unpaid charges, that the town will then remit the unpaid water charges to the appropriate entity. Now therefore be resolved as follows. That after due consideration of the above, request the town board does hereby adopt the resolution agreeing to forward the listed unpaid water charges listed by property owner to the County of Orange together with the request that the aforementioned unpaid charges in the amount of one hundred and two thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-one cents be re-leveed against the listed properties and that the same appear on the twenty twenty-three general tax bill. Can I get a motion to approve?
Second.
Ms. Scott?
Yes, uh, yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yeah.
Ms. Michael Rosy?
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes. Alright, next up, we have a resolution approving the agreement for termination of an employee. Whereas Stephen Guzzo was employed by the Town of Cornwall as a worker in the sanitation department. And whereas the Town of Cornwall terminated the said employee's employment for cause and whereas said employee grieved the town's termination of his employment and the matter was scheduled for binding arbitration. And whereas the town board and the said employee had reached a settlement agreement providing for termination of his employment, now therefore be resolved as follows. That the town board hereby approves the settlement agreement negotiated and prepared by the town's Labor Council, Jackson Lewis, PC. And two, that the town supervisor is authorized to execute the same and any documents necessary to carry out the terms thereof. Can I get a motion to approve?
Second.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yeah.
Ms. Michael Rosy?
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes. Okay, next up, we have a resolution for the stipulation of a union settlement. This is related to two matters, two grievances from twenty twenty that we've reached settlements on. Whereas the town board of the Town of Cornwall has received a grievance from the Civil Service Employees Association and Local One Thousand, AFS CME, AFLCIO, Town of Cornwall, Unit Seven, D nine, twenty-four, Orange County Local, Local A Thirty-Six, the union regarding an alleged failure of the town to utilize the agreed-upon overtime call rotation. And whereas the town board has denied the said grievance and the union has filed a demand for arbitration proceedings upon the denial of the grievance. And whereas rather than subjecting themselves to the expense and uncertainty of arbitration proceedings, the town and the union wish to settle and resolve the dispute over the said grievance by entering into a stipulation of settlement, a copy of which is attached here too, now therefore be resolved as follows. That the town board hereby approves the said stipulation of settlement, that the town supervisor is authorized to execute the stipulation of settlement and all documents necessary to enter it. Can I get a motion to approve?
Second.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Go ahead.
Ms. Michael Rosy?
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes. Okay, next up, we have a resolution for a temporary access license to one fifteen Academy Avenue. This has to do with the, uh, replacing sanitary sewer lines. We need temporary access in order to do it and this license agreement will allow us to do that. Whereas the town board of the Town of Cornwall has undertaken a project on Mailer Avenue to replace sanitary sewer lines. And whereas, as part of the said project, the town is relocating a sewer main near Academy Avenue. And whereas the said relocation of the sewer main will require rerouting a lateral serving the property at one fifteen Academy Avenue. And whereas in order to perform the work required for relocation of the sewer main and lateral, the town needs a license to enter and perform certain work upon one fifteen Academy Avenue. And whereas the owner of one fifteen Academy Avenue was willing to provide the town with said license, a copy of whi, which is annexed here too, now therefore be resolved as follows. That the town board hereby approves the said license agreement, that the town supervisor is authorized to execute the license agreement and all documents necessary to enter into said agreement. Can I get a motion to approve?
Second. Second.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yeah.
Ms. Michael Rosy?
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes. So real quick on Mailer, I'm told by the highway superintendent, I don't think he's here tonight, that the repaving of Mailer is scheduled to start on your, I believe it's Thursday of this week. So, you know, we have to get it done before the temperatures get too cold, so I'm told Thursday, we're gonna start repaving now. So obviously, we will fully confirm that, get notice up tomorrow once we, you know, depending on weather, but that's scheduled to happen this week. Alright, next up, we have a resolution accepting Eastminster Continental Road culvert. So it turns out that in order to install the culvert, that was, you know, that is gonna basically reconnect the one neighborhood that's detached from the other neighborhood on Continental Road, there are two wing walls that I guess is part of the hazard mitigation.
They're like folks on.
Yeah, so they're gonna be on properties. We have to get two eastmen. We have to get two easements. They, they, they were just identified by the engineer, so we are, we can't act on it tonight because, um, we have to make sure that the residents have a chance to look at it. I've already been able to contact one of them tonight and they're on board. The other one is selling their house. So, um, yeah.
Is it the second one?
Uh, Joanne Fox.
Deceased.
Oh, okay. So, um, Steve, this is where I turn to you and say, how did we do this?
I saw the name and I.
Yeah.
Well, even if she's deceased, God rest her soul.
It is.
She would have heirs.
Okay.
And the heirs of people that we'll have to get in touch with, we're not sure exactly how to do that, but we'll find a way.
Okay.
And then, whether it's gone through private or not, when someone passes away and they don't know property, until the property's probated, title automatically vests in their heirs. So, they can take into actions like grant an easement on those ones. So, it may complicate things a little, but I'm confident that we can get there. We initially talked about having a special meeting to discuss this further.
Yeah.
This may push that back into December, which I'm sure we can deal with.
Yeah, we will, we will.
If we can do it earlier, we'll, we'll contact you and see what we can set up.
Yeah, I mean, I, I've already, um, I have a contact info for the real estate agent that's selling the house. We'd certainly reach out to him and try to get to the heirs.
Alright, we'll talk to him.
Yeah, we'll talk tomorrow about that. Okay, so that's, so anyway.
Tomorrow and say, give us that.
Thank you. So, needless to say, um, we will be dealing with this. I've already spoken to the residents and they're very anxious for us to get this done and we will get this done.
Before spring.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, uh, my goal is January first, so, um, we are gonna get in touch.
Everything else fell apart, which I, I put confident, won't be. They want, anybody who's buying the property is gonna want this as much as the town does.
Sure.
The town could commence, I mean, domain proceedings, a day minimum taking title would vest immediately in the town. And then the only issue would be how much you would pay. So, we could certainly commence those proceedings and be ready to go in January if nothing else.
Okay, so, it sounds like we have options.
Yeah, I, I think we'll come to that.
Okay. Alright, so, um, next up, we have a sewer main easement. So, as part of the sewer, um, you know, main relining, uh, two eighty-one Main Street, we're going to need to get an easement from them. I've, I've been in touch with them, but he wants to review the easement before we, you know, go ahead and, so, I'll be in touch with him this week and we will, um, get that taken care of, um, but, so we're gonna hold this off too. Next up, um, the Hudson Valley Infrastructure Gap. Just wanna, just, just give the board a little, like, a brief update on this. So, a couple of weeks ago, Hudson Valley Pattern for Progress and the, the Construction Industry Council, they held a, what I would call like a, like a panel discussion with municipalities and engineering firms and others. And so, they asked the town of Cornwall to participate. So, we did. Um, the, the town's engineer Sean Arnott, um, Arnott was on that with us. And they basically wanted to know what our experience was like, well, one, securing state and federal money for infrastructure. Um, what was the process like? How onerous is it to administer the grants? And then, you know, uh, did we think there was enough funding out there for the projects? We had, had a good discussion for about an hour. Um, Sean definitely gave some benefit. I mean, as you're aware, M H G, the town's engineering firm, they handle like soup to nuts. Quite frankly, I don't know how we would be able to apply for these infrastructure grants, administer them and get it done without having an engineering firm. Um, some municipalities, you know, try to do it on their own. And that's, I wouldn't even attempt that because, like, the paperwork burden on, on these state and federal grants is really significant.
And you would lose time probably with the grants.
Yeah, exactly. So, I think, I, I think we're doing it the right way here in Cornwall. So, uh, the other thing they raised is that there's actually a lot of state and federal infrastructure money. It's been appropriated, but it's just sitting up with the state right now and it's not being either granted out. It's not, it's just not making its way down to municipalities. Like, there's, you know, billions of dollars. So, what they wanna do is they're looking to work with municipalities in their region to advocate to the state legislation and the governor's office to try and get this money released and to try to get it, you know, put out via grant, grant programs. So, I know that we're gonna be, they're, they're gonna be asking some of us to go to Albany to try to push for this because, you know, the, uh, what is it, the Build Back Better program, all that federal money? I mean, we have money, but it's just not being granted out. Yeah, so, and a lot of that would go towards stuff we need in Cornwall. So, that's, that's gonna be something we're looking at in the new year, once the, you know, this new legislative session and everything. So, just wanted to give you all an update on that. So, next, uh, the tree ordinance. So, I know this has been a while, um, a long time coming. Let me just tell you where we're at with this. Right now, the town's planner, Kristen, she has it and she's kind of like deconflicting, looking at it in accordance with other things we have on the books, like declaring grading permit, looking at, you know, just, you know, kind of, she's kind of like finding things in here that, that the town board might wanna consider taking out or leaving in. Um, she's gonna kind of give us what I would call a, I don't know, like a list of things that we've gotta consider as a town board. And we should have that in the next couple of weeks. So, um, once we have that, we're then going to pass this on to the town board and we're gonna take a look at it and we're gonna decide. But there's a lot of, I mean, look, there's, there's stuff in there, you know, we really wanna strike the right balance here with this. Like, what is, you know, we don't wanna be too onerous for residents, but on the other hand, we don't wanna let developers walk all over us. So, we have to, like, strike the right balance on this. And I, I think, so far from what I've seen, I think they've, you know, the C A C's done a really good job with this. But we really want the planner to, to look through it since, you know, we're gonna have to live with this. Once it, so I think, um, once the planner looks at it, I will pass, pass everything on and we'll, and we'll start the discussion in December.
Is there a, what, a copy of this?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Can you compare from last year's proposal to, if there's any changes, I just wanna see?
I've got, I've got the most recent version. I, is there, I'm trying to think, is there a different, Carla, so a question for you.
Did you have an updated version, Carla, from last year?
Uh, I do. I have the, uh, originally drafted version and I have, uh, that, um, councilor Gabba prepared, um, with input from the C A C and, or document shared from the C A C, and then I have the updated version.
Yes.
I can share that, yes.
Thank you. If you could send that out to the owners.
Okay. Um, next up, we have more easements. This is like easements tonight. The Main Street Bridge, right? So, the county's doing a, uh, bridge replacement project next year on Main Street. And in order to do it, they're going to need a temporary and a permanent, um, easement. And we're not gonna act on this tonight because there is some compensation involved in this. I just want the board to consider this, but overall.
The county is gonna be compensating them, correct?
Well, well, yes, yes. I'm actually paying, um, just by this here. So, the, you know, so we're just gonna have to sort of consider this. And so, actually, this is actually, my understanding is this is our property bed.
That's right.
So, they're actually gonna be paying the town. Yeah, no, so this, this is the benefit, right? So, they're paying for the bridge and they're gonna pay us upwards of almost fourteen thousand dollars.
That's nice.
So, there is a, um, temporary easement, which they need to do the work, and then there is a permanent easement, which would just be in perpetuity. Um, and so.
Temporary easement is, is a part.
Well, a part, right?
Yeah, yeah, basically the, yeah, basically, uh, temporary easement would be ten thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars. And the permanent easement would be, um, you know, smaller land size, um, would be three thousand two hundred and twenty dollars. And so, that's their, you know, the total compensation. I don't know how often municipalities negotiate with the county over this, but they are putting in a six million dollar bridge, so, you know. Um, I say, you know, I'm gonna think that, exactly, so we should probably take it. Um, right? And so, in order for them to put the bridge project out to bid, they need us to do the easement. So, we're gonna look to do this in December so they can then go and actually bid out the, uh, construction of the bridge.
What impact, if any, it's gonna have on the Inverine side where you have monuments? And the village has a water main.
They, well, their engineers have been looking into that. So, what I would suggest is that maybe we get, um, Ryan, Ryan Wire, right?
Yes.
Maybe we get him, and if the board has some questions about it, um, and what they're gonna do, um, maybe we get them to come back in and just address some of these issues. And I know they're thinking about it. They've been doing, I was gonna do borings and different, you know, engineering, different things to try to work this out. But maybe we ask them to come back in December. Maybe we get Ryan Wire coming and we can ask these questions, um, you know.
We'll walk, walk through.
Yeah, we do that here.
See what's going to, how far back they're coming to destroy things.
We could certainly do a walk, we could schedule a walk through too. Alright, I'm, I'm making a, um, okay. So, next up, um, we have a memo from the, uh, Gary Vincent, the building inspector. And so, as you're aware, um, the current software that they're using to sort of keep track of everything in the apartment, it's based on M S DAS, which I think is, what, twenty or thirty years old, right? And so, and it's also, it's this guy, what, uh, Mr. Lundquist or Lundquist?
Yeah.
Yeah, so this guy, uh, yeah, so this gentleman, twenty or thirty years ago, created this and this was the platform that was used by many building departments across Orange County. But it is because, um, we're concerned that, one, this doesn't really, uh, meet our needs anymore. Two, the, the gentleman that has created this, he is, you know, he's getting up there in age and he's the only one that provides updates. And, and so, um, if anything were to happen to the, to the creator, the town would be in a real pickle because we wouldn't have a way to update it, to keep it running. It would basically, you know, potentially we just lose all this data that we have. So, we basically need to, the goal, which, um, a number of municipalities that were using the system, like, uh, C O H and New Windsor, they have started migrating and, and moving to new systems. In fact, uh, the village of Cornwall and Hudson and the town of New Windsor, they are moving to Iwork, which we've already done.
Right.
For the building department and for K M O and whatever, splitting those costs with the village. But that did not include the building department, which is a whole separate.
Because of their software?
Yeah, just, yeah, yeah. And so, the, um, the building department has considered some other options. I know they've looked at, uh, B A S, which is another option, but that was really expensive. In fact, that was, that was almost twice or a few times the price of this. And, um, Diane Gary and myself, we've been on, uh, some calls with Iwork and they've shown us the functionality and they're really excited to be able to move, to basically migrate all the files to this new system and then use this new system going forward. That should, uh, make them be able to work in a much more cost-effective manner, more efficient manner. And they're one of the departments that actually is a driver of revenue for the town. So, we definitely want them to be operating in the most efficient manner as possible. And so, they have asked that we consider, um, basically a contract with Iwork for this. It's, it would roughly be seven thousand dollars a year. So, you know, little more than, what, six hundred dollars a month? But we've just raised the building fees, permit fees, and they're, they're bringing in. I mean, they really need to be able to keep up on this and to be able to.
We have a lot of big projects coming.
We do. So, um, there is, you know, we have the ability to pay for this and to do it. So, what I'm gonna ask the board is, after you've considered this, maybe spoken to Diane and Gary, um, that we take this up in December? And then, we, they want to basically, if the board should go with this, they wanna have January and February to do the install and the migration because they say, once they get to March and April, it's back to being busy again, right? Because you can start actually doing stuff again. So, they wanna have everything done during the slow game. So, I, I think if we're gonna do it, we approve it in December and we let them, you know, do the migration in January and February. And, uh, Steve's already got a copy of the contract, a look at it, and then we should be ready to go if we decide to do this in December. Next up, we have, uh, holiday festivities and tree lighting. And so, I, I just thought, um, I would give, um, a shout out to, you know, currently, the village and the town, we're looking at, you know, I know in years past, we've always done the tree lightings on the, was it the first Sunday of the month, so this year would be December fourth. And, uh, this year, we've got the Main Street Committee, the Town Youth Committee, the Chamber of Commerce, we've got the village, we've got the town. We're all trying to work together to come up with some type of, uh, what I would say, almost like a joint tree lighting effort. Traffic meeting right now.
Unified?
Yeah, unified, yeah. So, um, my understanding is that we would start in the town. Um, and then, once the town's tree lighting is done, there would be a parade. Uh, this year, it'll probably just be fire trucks and emergency vehicles transporting Santa potentially down to the village. That's the last I heard. So, I, I mean, I don't know what's gonna come out of tonight. But basically, we would start at the town, go down to the village for their tree lighting during the day from two to four P.M. Um, while it's light out, we would close down Main Street to the traffic circle. And I believe that the Main Street Committee is considering some activities on Bridge Street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we, yeah, I mean, initially, it was just gonna simply, simply with Santa Claus, hot chocolate.
Yeah.
Uh, it's definitely, uh, grown. Um, the one question I have is, um, have we spoken to the Storm King Engine Number Two, Highland Engine Company Number One? Because they typically do theirs, their lighting's at like six o'clock. And the timeline that's being proposed is before what they're doing.
So, yes, I have spoken to Storm King Engine is aware, so is Highland Engine. And the, the tree lighting is actually, it's the town's tree lighting in the center of the traffic circle. So, we're looking for them to partner with the town on a community tree lighting. So, yes, so I've, I've.
Okay, I just wanna make sure this, this has been a tradition. I just wanna make sure that.
Yeah, I mean, I think the only thing we're changing here is that we're looking to basically do the town's tree lighting somewhere around like five o'clock, right, when it gets dark. I mean, look, the times, times can change. I mean, this is one of those things where if we decide to do it a little bit later, we can certainly push it later. Um, but.
I think the proposed time is great because we can still use the daylight and a lot of kids will come out versus when it's dark and colder. So, and we're making new traditions to combine the.
So, I think, yeah, I mean, look, so we're basically, the only change here is that we're kind of gonna have, I think, more activities and we're gonna try to have a parade to connect the two tree lighting. So, let's see what comes out of tonight.
I'm just hoping the communications are a little bit better because, um, you know, even our meeting last night, we found out about activities that were going on that we had no idea. So, um, if you could really help us in, in communicating what's going on.
I mean, I know we put Buffy in charge as the point person, so we are looking for her to kind of pull it together. And so, um, the goal is by the end of this week, is to come up with a unified, this is what's happening. Um, I know we've been talking about how we're gonna, which groups can chip in what to pay for different things, but, um, you know, this is a, you know, we're gonna try something new this year. There's nothing wrong with trying new things. So, um, that's, uh, alright, so, um, as far as committee reports are concerned, uh, council member Michael Rosy.
Yes, uh, well, just continuing on what you just said about the, uh, holiday facilities and tree lighting. The youth committee, uh, Main Street beautification, Chamber of Commerce, and entertainment and freight subcommittee are actually working all together to organize, um, each committee will, uh, contribute some type of activity or festivity during the December fourth, uh, celebration for the Christmas and holidays. So, that's that. And actually, tonight, uh, the entertainment, uh, and freight subcommittee, um, was holding a meeting with youth committee together. And on the red department, um, with the pool, the town engineer and Woodbury Pool Engineer and Architec have been in collaborative work and we are expecting to see some rendering from their, um, talk and, uh, exchanges. Um, hopefully, sometime, uh, next month, uh, we'll find out what they, um, come up with, the, um, ideas. Um, the C C A C, um, we'll call it up here, um, will be submitting, on the rings pond, will be submitting a memo with recommendations of next step, what would be. And, uh, I believe it, um, that would include the, um, purchase of some type of equipments to clean up the algae's and making it, uh, you know, more, um, effective to clean it up. And tree ordinance, you, you do know that, uh, Josh and I, myself, myself did receive it. And I believe, um, Mr. Gabba is also, um, a part of that, being briefed. And that's my, my report. Thank you.
Okay, uh, council member Stad?
Okay, um, so, starting with the, uh, senior advisory committee. Some, some very interesting trying something new. November first, Eddie Jervens, uh, one of our senior, uh, advisory committee members. She actually held a historical, uh, tour, a bus tour.
she actually held a historical tour, a bus tour, guided bus tour of the town, and, um, with the help of, of Tony Lund, uh, the driver. So, um, she is looking forward to doing more of them. But, um, Tony really talked to her with the technology and, um, made her feel a lot more comfortable about doing it. So, um, again, we're utilizing the bus that Senator Scupas has been able to get us. Uh, our next meeting is, um, November eighteenth at one P M. at Munger Cottage. One of the last goals the seniors have for this year is, um, they want, they're looking to do a food drive, and, uh, they came up with a list of food items that seniors might need to help them through the winter months when food is scarce, um, or they're having difficulty shopping. So, we're going to, uh, put a box at Munger Cottage, uh, from, uh, starting, uh, Friday till, uh, January tenth. And what we're gonna do is come up with a list of seniors in need and actually distribute these items to them. Um, and basically come up with a care package and be able to distribute to those who sign up. As far as Firth Cliff Heights Water, um, I have no report. Main Street Beautification, um, we did have a meeting last night. Um, our, and I also did attend the meeting Thursday night as well as, as you did. Um, we went, um, and our goal last night is we agreed on Thursday that each committee was gonna work on a certain aspect and communicate it back. And that's how Buffy held our, um, one of the members of the Main Street Beautification. That's one of the roles that she's planning this evening. So what we are planning to do is on, um, we met last night, we basically went through what we were going to do in terms of finding ways, you know, to add, uh, holiday greenery to the three different parks. We're going to, on November twentieth, we're gonna actually meet as a group, split, split up into groups. Um, also working with Buildings and Grounds, when we're talking about the, uh, the cutouts that are typically in the circle, we're gonna sit, look at them, and see how we can basically distribute them in, in a couple of the parks. The Triangle Park, we just want to, um, you know, liven it up, and then the Circle as well. In addition, um, hopefully you're noticing the Cornwall Garden Club just put in a display, and, uh, we're looking to get the electric up, and it's already starting to look really festive out there. The other thing I have is, um, the lighting, I have no report on, obviously tonight we did that. Jewish Family Services, I just wanna report our, um, family visitor program. Uh, so for this month, in October, we were able to, um, only assist four neighbors, um, this month. The total number of services provided by volunteers, this is, um, for this month is thirty-one. The total number of hours provided by volunteers is eighteen. So, for this month, um, they attached a monetary value to the volunteer hours, it was five hundred thirty-nine dollars, ten cents. But this, the aggregate, the year-to-date total, um, the town's initial investment was five thousand dollars. We are at sixty-one hundred, sixty-nine dollars, seventy cents. So we've already surpassed the investment the town has in terms of, um, volunteers' hours that have contributed to the community. In fact, the last thing I have is KMO, um, the October report. Um, again, there's been a lot of pumping out and cleaning out, uh, sludge pits. The, uh, as far as parameters for the month, they're all within limits. The only thing that there's, that, again, I, I mentioned this last month, at the Firth Cliff Plant, um, a lot of this, um, those wipes are actually being cleaned out every single month. They basically put them in a bag and dispose them, but this, this actually affects the, um, the filtration, the aeration and filtration of the, uh, the system. And, uh, let's see, I think that's it. We've had a couple of things where, um, we're gonna see water, uh, knee break and maple and canary, and what was the other thing? Oh, this, um, sewer lateral replacement inspection? I don't know if this had to do with Academy Avenue, the floor building off of Academy? They just had to do that?
Yes.
Alright, and, uh, they've been doing a number of septic tank inspections as well. That's all I have.
Okay, Karen.
For the month of October, um, the building department issued fifty-two permits, twenty-four, uh, certificates of compliance were issued, three COs were issued. They did fifty-five onsite inspections, five complaints were investigated. They took in twenty-seven thousand eighty-six dollars and fifty cents of permit fees, and seven thousand six hundred dollars for municipal surges, nineteen of them. Uh, they took in a hundred dollars for renewal permits. New planning board projects opened this past month. One, that makes twelve, uh, tickets years to date. And no zoning board projects were opened this month. I do not have anything from the highway department.
Okay.
But I know they have been preparing for what we're seeing outside now with some plows on.
Yes, they certainly, they certainly have been. Yeah, we're just hoping that it doesn't snow too much more before the year is up, because we don't wanna have to refill the salt barn.
Right.
Let me see, uh, EDAC, um, does either Wen or Steve Jones wanna give an update on the Economic Development Advisory Committee? I'll defer to Steve again.
Sure. So last month, we closed out our logo contest. Sherry Paulstein is a local graphic designer. She's the one who won, uh, she, the running logo, and she actually did the, um, front her up logo as well. We paid her, and you can see her logo displayed on our website, explorecornwallnewyork.com, and on our Facebook page, Explore Cornwall, uh, it's on Facebook. And so, that portion of the logo contest, it's all closed out, and she's been paid and awarded, and an announcement has been made. We're currently in the middle of running a Google ad, um, for our, our website. We are focusing on people in the city, so community members in New York City who are looking for hiking, um, and like fall festival type things, like there was pumpkin picking, and now we're gonna go into pumpkin pies and all those types of things. So anyone who's looking to come into the area for farm, table type stuff, um, those, those are the target market that we're looking to do right now. So by the end of this month, we should have some data back on how that's going. So I'm intrigued to see what data we do get back from Google.
Okay.
We continue to work through and organize the community feedback that we got from, um, our community outreach for the New York Forward Grant. We're gonna probably be working on that for the next couple of months. I mean, it's a big undertaking. Kind of prioritize what might need to be done first, and, um, feasibility assessments and all those things. And we have three open seats that are currently, uh, vacant on our committee. Uh, I'd like to fill if possible, so we can make a public announcement outside of this opportunity right now.
Yeah, we could, we could.
We're, we just did a SWOT analysis, which is just the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And the SWOT, the strengths and weaknesses were internal. So we kind of have a good graph now of what we can manage and what we might need assistance with, skill-wise and, um, bandwidth-wise, those types of things. So I'll be reaching out via email to the town board and asking maybe specific qualities we're looking in candidates, um, maybe to help define, get some more talent on our team as well.
Okay.
That's it.
Thanks, Steve.
Yep.
Alright, so let me, let's start with the, uh, town Cornwall Police Department. For the month of October, we had six hundred and forty-eight calls for service. We had nine thousand four hundred and nineteen total mi- uh, miles driven. Uh, for the year, we've got seventy-two thousand six hundred and twenty-eight miles, thirty-three traffic and appearance tickets issued, thirty-seven parking tickets issued, twenty-three motor vehicle accidents reported, five arrests made, uh, three nine-one-one hangups, missed eyes or open lines, thirty-three alarms, eleven ambulants requests, seven animal complaints, one criminal mischief, nine disabled vehicles, eight domestic incidents, six parking complaints, twenty suspicious vehicle persons, twelve house checks, and fifteen assist other agencies. For, uh, New Windsor EMS, Cornwall EMS, uh, for the month of October, um, let me see here, personnel, they are interviewing for some full-time, uh, positions. They're looking for a new part-time, I'm sorry, uh, one new part-time paramedic was hired. There's one medic out on injury. They had a paramedic attend the New York State EMS conference. There were three hundred and fifty-six total responses for service, two hundred and fifty-two in New Windsor, sixty-six into the town of Cornwall, fifteen in.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, fifteen into the village of Cornwall. They provided mutual aid, eleven to the town of Newburgh, um, two to the city of Newburgh, four to Woodbury, five to Highland Falls, one to Montgomery. The average response time to New Windsor is, uh, seven minutes and fifteen seconds. In Cornwall, it's better, it's seven minutes and five seconds. The average response time to COH is seven minutes and eleven seconds. New Windsor units have responded to seven-second calls in Cornwall, while the Cornwall unit responded thirteen times to third calls in New Windsor. This is all kind of like tactical, um. So far for the year, they've had three thousand one hundred and fourteen calls. No calls for service went uncovered in New Windsor and Cornwall, which I think is the most important number. There is also no vehicle ac- accidents, drive cameras in all ambulances, so we're definitely monitoring that. Let me see here, um, so just in terms of New Windsor, um, I have spoken to Chief Big, and we're gonna be looking to do a NARCAN training, um, either at Munger Cottage or at, uh, the, uh, the Cornwall videos building. He's just verifying some things to make sure he has enough staffing on hand, but, you know, as you're aware, we had, there's, you know, increasing incidents throughout the county, even in our own school district and community. And parents have reached out, and they would like to, to be able to learn how to use it and to be able to have it on hand in case they have to, God forbid, use it. In fact, um, uh, Cornwall EMS, uh, uh, Cornwall EMS, I believe, responded to a call at the high school a couple of weeks ago, and they had to deploy it. So, look, we're already doing it in Cornwall here. And also, you may have heard, uh, what was it, earlier in the week, we had this really tragic accident on Route Thirty-two. We had a number of fatalities, they responded to that as well. So, I mean, look, they're doing, um, you know, many times, um, I have to say, I think we're really lucky. We have the best ambulance service here in Orange County, probably in the Hudson Valley, and so we're really lucky that we have them, and they're doing good work. So that is, um, New Windsor EMS, Cornwall EMS. Uh, as far as some other things here, um, the New York Forward Grant application that we submitted back in September, we will be finding out, uh, about that by the end of the year. If awarded, EDAC is gonna be very busy, um, as will the town and the village, and, uh, so fingers crossed on that, but we're gonna know soon on that. The other thing, um, the, the village's water commission. So, the village is looking to stand that up in either December or January, and they, they would like it to operate for four months and to look at a number of items. And I am going to be, I've already told the mayor this, I'm going to, um, Councilmember-elect, uh, Tim McCarty, he's gonna be the town board's liaison, and Carla Castillo, she's going to be the resident, uh, rate payer liaison to that committee. And they're gonna be, so the mayor will be reaching out, um, you know, when those meetings are gonna be starting, and the goal is gonna be to look at everything from, you know, from the rate differential that village and town residents are paying, to the infrastructure needs, to just a good sort of hard look. And then, over the course of four months, then they're gonna come back with a report to both the town and the village. But that, that's all I've got on that. So, I mean, you know, and again, the village is gonna be leading the effort because they control the water system. So we're, but we're gonna have representation on that, and so I look forward to hearing back from, you know, when that's concluded. Yeah, if there is anything that's on that. Board members, is there anything else before we move to public comments?
Did you hear anything on the generators for the Firth Cliff sewers? I'm just curious.
Oh, yes.
Nothing?
So, no, they are, uh, they will be coming in in December, and we're gonna have to pay for them with our.
Which we are originally done.
Yes, so that, that will be one of the operating expenses this year.
Some time for questions?
Yes. So, alright, is there any public comments? Yes, uh, so we'll go to the back, um, Mr. Kalore.
Thank you. My name is Brandon Kalore. I'm the president of CSCA Local Eight Thirty-Six, Unit Seven Ninety-Two Four. I'm here to represent, speak for the members of the workforce that work here in Cornwall. My members either attend the meetings, they'll be watching, okay? For every other day, for every sort of membership. And I always get a little aggravated when the day after one of your many meetings, they come back and say, oh, they're talking about threatening to cut highway sanitation, the police department, the Buildings and Grounds, which you did last meeting on November first. All these are union positions, so I ask you, why do you immediately go there when you yourself control the pay raises of town employees, which are not under union contract? Why not make cuts to your own town personnel? I mean, I've got a lot of information, I know there's been adjustments to pays whether it's the town clerk or the board members or the town supervisor, whatever. But I tell you, as a membership, it really aggravates us the next day when we gotta come into work and we're hearing about one of you making possible cuts to these, that are union positions. It's ridiculous, and we reject it outright. When you make cuts to DPW, which includes sanitation, it'll take longer to get the snow off the road. They got it started tonight, long winter. To get all the smaller items that people in this fine town call to get done, to get roads repaired. Our standard, uh, our, our membership, including our standard sanitation department, the women that work here, Phil's Murphy, Diane Hines, uh, Janet over dispatch, we're all five-star employees. Now, as Mr. Supervisor, uh, Mo Jauhowski mentioned, like, there's some grievances settled. We have a clear slate right now, and I want the people of Cornwall to understand that when there's agreements or an issue with the union, you taxpayers, you're not paying for my work, you're paying for theirs. So we wanna play nice in the sandbox. We have a contract, we got it done, but I would ask nicely that the board consider the words that you use when making cuts. Last meeting you mentioned, the affinity for having dispatchers, local dispatchers. Right now, we have two open union positions in town. One is a Buildings and Grounds employee, which has been vacant for quite a while. The other is Seeline Dispatcher. I'd like to get an update in the near future of when we plan on Building's positions, because as of January fourth, Mr. Rich Watts will be retiring, and you'll have one guy in Buildings and Grounds. Mowing, plowing, cleaning up, fixing the air conditioners. Probably should, uh, get a move on on that. I got a couple of other things here, but it's not important. What's important is that my job as a, as the union president is represent my membership. Whether I agree with them or not, we get along anyway. It's up to me to come before the town board express our concerns. That's what I'm here for tonight, and whether it's the fault of the current board or the previous board makes no matter to me. I will not allow empty threats to go unnoticed or unanswered. We are union strong, but only with the cooperation of the supervisor and the town board can we be Cornwall strong. Olivia, that, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, I appreciate it.
So let's just say real quick for the record here that the, the town has not made any cuts to these positions.
No, but you, you made a mention of it.
Um, the town's not made any cuts to the budget. In fact, we ended up having to, in order to avoid having to do that, we had to exceed, you know, we had to do what we had to do this year to do that, and I did that with great pride because in order to run the town, we need those employees. So that's why we adopted the budget that we did this year. That's what we did, because we wanted to seek to avoid those.
Waited the first ten, fifteen minutes of the November first meeting.
So unfortunately, that's what we had to do. So we did avoid those cuts, and I am pleased to say that we are going to be looking to have fully-staffed departments next year, and we are working on filling those vacancies.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Well, thank you. So, thank you very much. Let me just say, you were talking about, Tom talking about the repaving of Mallard Avenue, and it might start this Thursday. When I talked to him a couple of weeks ago, what he was saying is they have to take all the old stuff off and then pave it, so it's kind of like just, it's not just paving, so I don't know how that filters in, because they did do the cutouts by the driveways, but they haven't started to remove the old, old stuff like he was talking about before they actually repave it. The tree ordinance, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with what that would be, but we have a little bit of a problem with a neighbor with hedges that goes back to my mother, and Gary actually has a file on that. And I know that the Village has an ordinance on how high hedges can be, but the town does not, so I just ask if that can be looked at, I don't know if it's part of this or not. I know trees are big, hedges are not. The other thing as far as the iWork Q software for the building department, my concern is, I know you mentioned the migration, if this is approved, which sounds like it's a great thing, but my concern is how will the migration go, and are we sure we won't lose any of the old information when the migration occurs? Because what's our, what's our backup plan for that? And my last comment is, thank you, tonight was a very nice and enjoyable board meeting, and haven't had that in a long time, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Carla?
So I found the, I found the information, so the Public Service Commission provides regulations on timeframes for purchasing of streetlights, so the regulations are that any municipality can make a request for a purchase price once a year. And then, when that request is made, the utility company has ninety days in which to respond. And once the, the, the purchase price is provided, the municipality has a hundred and eighty days to respond from that date. So if you have a contract at some point, dated July, as you might have mentioned, I'm assuming that that means a hundred and eighty days from whatever that date is, but I'm not exactly sure. And then if you enter into the agreement with the utility, the utility then has sixty days in which to file it with the Public Service Commission, and the Public Service Commission has up to a hundred and eighty days to approve the request, the purchase request, plus this talent. Those are the dates.
Okay, thanks, Carla. Yes, sir.
Hi. My name is James Helbig. I live over in Mountainville on Rustic Ridge. Today I'm here to complain about my neighbors on Boulder Drive. This time at eleven Boulder Drive, I mean, you're all familiar with the camp up at Twenty-Nine Boulder, it hasn't stopped, but eleven Boulder Drive for the past two years has been an after-school daycare center for physically and mentally disabled boys. Every day, except for Saturdays, and now they don't come on Fridays because they have to go home a little early with the daylight changing, every day from three-thirty in the afternoon, Raheem Van shows up with at least a half a dozen children, if not more, and a handful of men workers. They go inside of Number Eleven, which is just a single-family house built in nineteen fifty-five, two bedrooms, it's always been a single-family house. They stay there until about five-thirty each afternoon, they gather all the kids back up in the bus, shut it all down, and everyone leaves for the night. All summer long for the last, this summer at least, it's an all-day-long daycare program. It's all I can call it, it's a daycare. It's not like a camp, there's not a lot of activity outside, the kids show up, they have children in wheelchairs showing up to this home that's pretending to be a daycare. It's unregulated, it's unlicensed, it's unsafe, it's non-compliant with anything ADA. And yet they, I've watched them manhandle this young boy to get him out of his wheelchair and into the van at times. I've been communicating with the board and with Gary Vincent about Boulder Drive since twenty nineteen. This particular home, I was just checking my emails, since May, I sent you guys an email in May regarding eleven Boulder Drive, I sent you an email in August, I just recently sent you another email with some pictures. Pretty much all of Boulder Drive has been purchased by LLCs run by Raheem. Number thirty-five Boulder Drive on eleven-four, two Fridays ago, there was a fire at their house. It's just all unregulated up there. They own all the properties, I don't know if Raheem owns them all, but they're all owned by LLCs, and Raheem intermingles between all of them. What I would like to see is someone come up to Number Eleven and just take a look at this daycare center, watch these boys, watch the children in wheelchairs, and see what goes on up there. I understand you have a new code enforcement person here in town, maybe she should take a ride up. My emails have told you, anytime after four o'clock, just show up. If you want to watch them come up, come up at three o'clock and sit in the driveways and just up on Boulder Drive and just watch. It goes on every single day. Someone's going to get killed if there's a fire. There is no emergency exits, as a matter of fact, there's garbage outside of their home. I have been to the property, I've taken videos. Every one of the windows is blocked by hedges and bushes, there's no sprinklers, there's nothing in there that would make this legal. So I'm just here again to complain and let you know what's going on up there. It has not stopped since, whatever, twenty nineteen, I think they came out at the beginning of twenty nineteen. The fellow that owns this house, Number Eleven, like Israel Kraus, is an employee of Raheem. So he's using his personal house to house this daycare center. If you want to look into it, that's, thank you. And that's it, thank you, appreciate it.
Is there anybody else? No? Yes, sir, in the back.
Brandon Doyle. Over regards to the bridges now, are they going to replace the Hasbro Bridge now that it's posted at sixteen ton, that none of, you know, most of our emergency vehicles out of the firehouse, our highway trucks, and our sanitation trucks cannot go over now? Do they feel like that that should be replaced first instead of the Main Street Bridge?
That is next, they're, so unfortunately, they ended up targeting the Main Street Bridge first, with the Hasbro Bridge scheduled for replacement, I want to say in twenty-four.
So we're going to have to have an emergency access plan on how to get to the other side?
These are, these are county bridges, so.
But there are also town roads, that's why I'm asking. And you have town residents on the other side?
I, I understand, sir, but the county, the county has, you know, indicated, you know, their engineers have taken a look at both bridges, and they've determined that the priority first is the Main Street Bridge.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, can I get a motion to go into closed session and seek the advice of councilor?
Soon.
Sir.
Yes.
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 Yes.